All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Wednesday, July 10th zoning Board meeting. Tonight, we have a rather large agenda. I think it's a record agenda that I've seen. We have 16 cases. And we're going to ask you, when you testify, to confine your comments to 15 minutes if you're the applicant. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the bill will be called on next, and you will have five minutes. And anyone who speaks against the application will also have five minutes. Then we'll get comments from code enforcement, and we'll decide the case before we go on to the next one. We do have a case that will not be heard tonight. They've asked to defer to August, and that's case 0203-2024, 287 Loudon Road Gateway Performance District by Dundee Investment Associates. So if anybody's here to testify towards that case, we won't be hearing that case tonight.
And this serves as your notice that being continued will not be renoticed.
Do we need a motion on that to continue it?
Sure.
I move to continue that case by request of the applicant.
Second to the August meeting, which will be August.
I don't know the date, but the August EBA, yes.
The August EBA meeting.
Seventh.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none? It'll be deferred until August. Whatever. All right, our first case tonight is ZBA 004-2022, 10 Ferry Street, OCP Opportunity Corridor Performance District, John Flatley Company owners, owners requesting that the variance approved in April of 2022 be continued for one year. Request was submitted in March 2024, but due to confusion on of whether an additional variance was required to move the sign, the extension was not added to the agenda. We don't usually take public testimony on a request for an extension.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any problem extending it for a year.
I mean, neither do I. Do we have any reason for this?
Any indication why they need the extension?
Why they needed it?
Yeah.
So this is all part of the confusion when they needed to move the sign, and then we had to delay their hearing to get the new variance, and that's even coming up again tonight. But last month, we finally heard that variance because they needed to move it because the original plan was on a easement indirectly over a sewer line. So when they realized that all happened, they knew their timeline to get the extension was at the same timeframe. It was actually in their original application. We, the staff, never transferred it as a request to this board to do that extension two months ago.
Oh, so they're waiting for a ruling on their other requests before they could submit this? So it was just an honest?
So both cases you're going to hear from them were code, staff errors, that we just didn't notice it properly.
Fair enough. All right, yeah, that's, I mean, I move through.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There's none. So the, so the extension has been granted. All right, our first rehearing request tonight is case 0133-2023.
That was just on the extension.
I know, but do I need a person to motion, or do I just put, I didn't hear?
Andrew went to make the motion.
I seconded. Thank you. You're welcome.
David, should we go into their requests now, or should we do that later?
I would do the, I'd stay on Ferry Street right now if you could, just bring that up.
So we're just going to jump ahead to the first public hearing case 01852024?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. 02082024, 10 Ferry Street, applicant is requesting a variance to Article 2869, got to get new glasses, F, to allow a third freestanding sign to be installed five feet from the property line where 25 feet is required. Do we have anybody from, please come forward. And one more thing, one more housekeeping rule. After you testified, we ask you to sign the book that's on the table behind in the first row there. Just we want you to sign in.
Okay, thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company.
All right, Mr. Walker, tell us what you'd like to do.
We were here a while back, and what we had done is we had moved the sign from its approved location, which was in front of the dumpsters on the plan. And we found out that that was also in the middle of a sewer easement. So we slid it to eight and a half feet off the property line, which means you're five foot setback, which, at the time, after speaking with the code department, we thought it was just a simple move of the sign. But apparently, there are additional signs on the property within, with a reduced setback, I should say. So that results in this sign actually requiring a variance instead of just a simple plan, plan revision.
If I may, I can offer the clarification. So when you have a first sign on a property, you're allowed to be five feet from the property line for that sign. Any additional signs, which just represents a third freestanding sign, must be 25 feet. We never noticed it that way. When we said last week, they wanted to be eight and a half feet from the property line, and you got last week, last month, you all approved that. We thought it was five feet until we dug into the ordinance with the transition of staff, and we went, it's not. Actually, planning is the one that realized when they submitted the site plan that that variance wasn't granted appropriately. Though the case you heard, nothing is changing. It's going to be eight and a half feet from the property line, but the variance they need now is because the third sign was supposed to be 25 feet. Well, let Mr. Walker talk about the hardships.
The biggest hardship for the site is the existence of the city sewer easement. We've got a 25 or 30-foot wide sewer easement that runs through the property. It actually encompasses the area where the site dumpsters are, which was where the original sign was located. I had thought about moving the sign somewhere within the easement that wasn't directly over the sewer line, because where the sign was shown before is literally on top of the sewer line. And the public works department did not want anything additional inside of that easement. So for visibility purposes, we couldn't move it further away, or else we just, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. It wouldn't basically be useless. So we slid it to meet the five foot, what we believe to be the approved five foot setback, and had it at eight and a half feet. And again, this is what we had heard last, last time I was here. Nothing, nothing's moved, nothing's changed. It's just, again, the city took another look at it and realized it required the variance.
Good question. Before, because I remember you got the original variance, and then you came back because you realized that because of the easement, you had to move it. So would, how, how much of a setback was there from the original variance before you had the easement problem? Would you have needed this variance at that time?
No, but if, if, if we had known the easement was on there, we would have come in the, whatever it was, two years ago, I guess. I didn't realize the easement was on there until more recently, at which point, that's when we started.
Well, what I'm saying, if, let's, let's say that if the easement problem had never come up, and you were able to put it in your originally requested location, would you have needed this setback variance, or does that?
No, we would have left the sign where it was, where it was originally proposed.
And that's more than 25 feet?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
So help me understand how the sewer easement prevents you from complying with the 25-foot setback. Do you have a sketch of where the sewer easement is?
Yes, I do. I think there's one in your pack, but I've got one that might be a little clearer. I don't know.
I do.
Mark there?
Yep.
That's the distance from the property line to the front of the sign, and the red dash line directly behind that sign, that is the edge of the sewer easement.
Okay.
So the sewer easement is behind that, behind that sign. You see that there's two, there's actually two red dash lines?
Yep.
There's one right behind the sign, and there's one, obviously, that's a distance away from that.
Yep.
Within that area is the sewer easement.
Okay. And where was the sign originally supposed to be?
It was in front of the dumpster that was closest to the roadway.
Sort of where the 244 is?
Even a little further away than that.
Okay.
It was actually in the, in the parking lot itself.
So why can't it now be in the parking lot itself?
Because it's, because right now, that area where the sign was originally proposed is within that sewer easement.
Right. So why can't you pull it further back? So that it's in front of, like, the second dumpster outside of the sewer easement?
Just pulling it further away from the, from the highway gives it less visibility. It makes it a little more difficult to see.
A little more difficult?
Because it's still really high and really big. Like, how much more difficult to see? Do you have any renderings or anything?
I don't have any rendering showing.
Can you remind us, or do you know yet what, what exactly is going to be on the sign?
Not quite yet, no.
It's going to be some of your tenants, probably, who?
Tenants will probably be on there. That's the initial thought anyways. We'll put a handful of our tenants on there. And if at some point, somebody wants to do an advertisement on there or something, we would obviously have to go to the city for any approval on that.
The sign's 220 square feet. Is that correct?
It's actually a little smaller now. It's 200.
Dave, do you happen to know, is there, is it a rule that they, the sign can only be for onsite tenants, or once it's approved?
Yes. I mean, you have renderings of what somewhat proposed as far as tenants. So when he says advertising, he means tenant in the very property.
They would have to get approval from others.
This is going to go to ADR.
But if they wanted to, like, rent it off to someone in the public?
No.
That would have to go through some other approvals. It's not generally allowed, right? Okay.
Correct.
Sorry for not being more clear on that.
No, no, that's okay.
And it got to the point where ADR also asked them to take the City of Concord logo off of it. Architectural Design. So it's already been through planning, has approved. They made some adjustments to the sign. They have their guidelines, what the sign can display.
Oh, the logo shows it hasn't been approved yet, or?
No, they wanted to put the logo, City of Concord logo on their sign, and we said, no, do not. Not us, I mean.
Oh, they didn't want it to be in officials' name, I think.
Yes, there are strict guidelines on what's going to be on that sign.
So if you had to move it outside the easement from its original location, how much further back from the road would it be?
If we were to hold the, again, we had it towards the corner of the parking lot with that end dumpster, as I'll call it. If we stayed at that location in the parking lot and moved it, it would be roughly another 40 feet off. If we slid it to the front of where the dumpsters are, we would only be sliding at about 15 feet.
If you were, if you moved the sign to put it in front of the dumpsters and within the setbacks, would it disrupt the ability to get at the dumpsters and?
Yeah, that, that, probably should have brought that up. But if we were to stick it, say where the second dumpster is outside of the easement, we'd have a dumpster, a sign, and a dumpster. Yeah, pole, sign, the whole nine yards.
Any other questions?
Good question. It kind of strikes me, I'm not, not that visually savvy, but the, putting it closer in a way kind of increases the perception of the size of the sign, right? I mean, could there be a trade-off where the sign's a little bit, right? Because the closer it is?
Yeah, it would look bigger because you're closer.
Right. Because obviously, what, one of the big appeals, and it's, you know, I understand it's your property, it's part of the appeals a lot, is you're getting this kind of prime advertising right along through. I figure you're going to get a lot of cars. So I think one of the concerns we may have had was, I don't know, like, safety or just aesthetics of people seeing a huge, you know, fairly large sign, you know, as they're, you know, getting on the highway. So I wonder what your thoughts are about that, if the size, perhaps, because it's getting closer to the road, the size could be adjusted accordingly to make the total perceived perception of the sign similar to what was originally approved.
So, yeah, I, I agree in general with what you're saying. But in this particular case, this, this isn't a typical, you've got the right-of-way sidewalk roadway. There's, there's a good distance between the property line and the actual traveled way of the road. If the sign is shown there at eight and a half feet, and you go to the breakdown lane of the roadway, you know, you're looking at almost 30 feet, right in that ballpark. So if it was right up against the road, it would almost be pointless, because, you know, you don't want people looking up at it, you know?
Yeah.
In this case, and again, I guess I'll address this too, the height of our sign, I think we had a 20-foot height, there, there's a little bit of an incline where this, where this sign is now going to be. So that pole, top elevation of the sign is going to be the same as the top elevation as well. So the pole, instead of being X amount of feet long, it's, if it's, if that hill is six feet high, it'll be, if it was 20 feet, it's now going to be 14 feet. So the, the bottom elevation of that sign is, and the top elevation, same thing, is going to be the same exact as it was previous approvals.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Does anyone want to be heard in favor of this appeal? Does anyone want to be heard in opposition to this appeal? Seeing none. Mr. Hall, comments? Seeing none? Clear the case closed and open it up for discussion. Andrew?
Well?
You had a lot of thoughts on this.
I don't know. I had a lot of questions. I don't know if I had thoughts. But I, I think some of my, you know, you know, it's been a little while since we went through the original decision. And I do think we had, it wasn't a quick decision when we originally approved it, because it, it's, this is a very prominent location in Concord, and there's, you know, there's not a lot of, kind of quote billboard-style signs in the city. And I think that's, you know, by design. But we did approve the original one. So I think, I think approving this is consistent with that, because I don't think it's really going to materially change kind of the total impact of the sign. So I'd be inclined to approve it.
I was wild about it the first time. I'm not wild about it this time. But I think, given the existence of the sewer easement and the location of the dumpsters, which could probably move if they had to be, there's enough of a uniqueness on the property that justifies the variance. And there's nothing about moving it closer to the road that's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood or reduce surrounding property values. So I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't want to relitigate what we did the last time. Still, one of the things that gave us pause was it's a great big sign, far away from the entrance of the building, two traffic blocks away. But we did approve those elements of it, and this sewer easement seems to be enough of a hardship to get to yes tonight.
I don't, I don't really have a problem with it. I'm looking at the, I guess, more up-to-date Google images are here. So, yeah, I'm inclined to agree.
Are you to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We didn't have a problem.
Need a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries, five to nothing. Okay.
So is Mark the sitting alternate tonight?
No, Ted's.
Ted is.
No, Mark is your, your, your five board members are here.
Okay.
Ted will be sitting in for a couple of the cases where there's going to be recusals.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
All right. So our first case tonight is a rehearing request on case 0133-2023, 270 Loudon Road Gateway Performance District on Exstiple Gate, Concord. Let's see. In the redevelopment of Exstiple Gate Mall property into a mixed-use development for the multi-building, multi-lock project, the applicant requests the following variances. One, Article 2841-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, maximum height, to allow maximum height of 39, 59 feet 8 inches where 45 is allowed. Two, Article 2824-J, Table of Principal and Accessory Uses, to allow tire center J-8 where prohibited in a GWP district. Three, Article 2841-C, Table of Dimensional Regulations, Minimum Lot Frontage, to allow frontage to be calculated based on the combination of frontage on a corner lot rather than the calculation along one street as required. Four, Article 2841-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, Maximum Lot Coverage, to allow 91% coverage where 85% is allowed. Five, Article 2872-E, Table of Off-Street Parking Requirements, to allow 1,833 parking spaces where 3298 are required. Six, Article 2877-F, Driveway Widths, to allow a 30-foot driveway width where 28 is required, is a maximum. Seven, Article 2877-J, Illumination of Parking Area, to allow light posts at 36 feet 6 inches in height where 25 feet is a maximum. Eight, Article 28713-C, Design Standards for Loading Spaces, to allow 12-foot wide loading spaces where 14 is a minimum. And finally, nine, Article 28714-E, Screening of Refused Containers, to not screen trash compacters where screening around three sides is required. So we have a request to rehear this.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to read the 0142 and discuss it altogether, that they were heard together for the most part.
All right, let's do that, too. Since I'm getting long-winded, might as well add this to it. 0142-2024, 270 Loudon Road, GWP Gateway Performance District on Exstiple Gate, Concord LLC owners. One, a variance from Article 2872-E, Table of Off-Street Parking Requirements, to allow fewer spaces than required. A, Lot 40 and 40-1, Costco and JCPenney, 943 spaces where 1131 is required. B, Lot 40-2, Mixed Use Residential/Fitness/Recreational/Retail, 1,019 spaces where 2,055 are required. And C, Lot 41, Applebee's Restaurant, 56 spaces where 68 are required. And two, a variance from Article 28711B, Alternative Parking Arrangement, Construction of Fewer Parking Spaces, to allow the Planning Board to authorize construction of fewer parking spaces on Lot 40 and 40-1, Costco and JCPenney, without showing that a sufficient land area is allocated and shown on the site plan for the full number of spaces required. I assume everybody got all of that. Okay. What do you guys think?
May I go first?
Yes, please.
As the only person who voted against any of the variances? I still think the variances should not have been granted, but I don't think there is any reason to grant the request for rehearing. I don't think they, databases for granting a rehearing. I don't think granting a rehearing is going to change this board's decision, and I think the rehearing should be denied.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think, you know, this was very well litigated by both sides. I understand it's a very important case to, to a lot of people. So I certainly don't begrudge them for wanting to make a very thorough record, but I, but I really think that, that's what this is. I don't think, really, there's anything new. I mean, we talk about this a lot. I do have a quick question about this case. Does anyone know, because we had tabled three?
Yep.
And that was withdrawn by the applicant.
Oh, it was withdrawn. Okay. I just was trying to keep track of that. I just was trying to keep track of that. Thank you. Okay. So I agree with Ms. Specter-Moore.
Jim?
I agree. I was, I believe I was here for the first hearing, but not the second, so I didn't go in on it, I considered it all. I reviewed the material, and I agree with Laura that not any new facts or errors on the part of the ZVA that would justify rehearing.
I agree. I agree, too. I didn't see any new information or errors in what we did. So I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Hall, any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
I will move to deny the request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Some more hands. Seconds, all those? Any discussions? All those in favor of denying the rehearing request for both items? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion to rehear both cases has been denied. Okay. Now to the regular agenda. Case 0185, 2024, Highland Street, R. A. Neighborhood Residential District, owner is MDR Rehab and Development LLC. Applicant seeks a variance pursuant to Article 2841-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, for the construction of a duplex on a vacant lot. Variances would be required as follows. Article 285, two duplex or two-family dwellings, minimum frontage and minimum lot size where 120 feet of frontage and 1,500 square feet, 15,000 square feet are required, where applicant only has 107 feet of frontage and 10,788 square feet, square foot lot. Do we swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
You do.
I do.
Okay. State your name as you testify, please.
Good evening. My name is Rob Deegan with S.H. Land Services. I'm the surveyor, and I'm here tonight with Ray McMahon, the property owner. So we were before you guys, was it April?
I believe so.
Back in April, seeking to develop this as a four-unit condominium. And we took some feedback from the board and from a bunch of the butters who wish to speak, and we've reworked our proposal as a duplex. It's a very similar-sized building, but requires a lot less relief from the zoning board. Still deficient on lot area, and it actually requires a frontage variance where the original application did not. But the things about the driveway, you know, backing into the street and stuff like that no longer apply, nor were there any more buffer issues or setback issues with this proposal. So that's what we are seeking to do. Do we have it to put up on the screen, or is there any need to talk about it? At least someone has copies.
I'll get there. I thought they had copies of what you submitted. So are you looking for rendition, or what are you looking for?
I was just wondering if, like, everyone, making sure everyone could see it, like...
Oh, it was up there. I'm sorry.
There we go. So like I was saying, the proposed building really hasn't changed much in size, we're just proposing less units within it. One driveway located in the middle of the lot provides adequate buffer between driveways in accordance with the city separation rules. It's, if anyone was wondering, it's proposed for, like, one garage space and one space in front of the garage for parking. I know that was a question last time, what we were showing there. Any other questions I can answer?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Tell me about the character of the neighborhood in terms of other lot sizes and the presence of multifamily dwellings.
Of course. So the, there are several lots in the neighborhood that already have duplexes on them, many of which are actually smaller than this lot is. So we feel it's a reasonable use of the property. It fits with the character of the neighborhood. You know, obviously, there's a four-unit condo across the street, but there's also, within a block, there's, I want to say, six or seven of those houses are duplexes. And our lot is larger than a lot of them.
Which ones are duplexes?
I honestly couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I would have to click on those and identify them, but the...
Like the one across the street? Looks like it's...
That's the four-unit condo there, but...
You want me to click away and see if I can find any?
Nope, that's...
You said that your last variance, when you were seeking the four unit, did not require a frontage variance, but now you do. Is that because it just wasn't noticed?
No.
No, that's because the rules don't require it.
Multifamily has different standards than duplex.
Go figure. I mean, not that it has different standards, I'm just surprised at that.
Yeah, I was caught off guard by that, too.
Questions? Thank you very much. Where else is that? Thank you. Does anybody want to be heard in favor of the appeal? Is there anyone who wants to be heard in opposition to the appeal? Please step forward.
Hello. Hello.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly state your name as you testify.
My name is Joyce Cottner.
What would you like us to know?
I just think it's a far stretch, as far as, like, I'm looking at these numbers, and that's quite a big ask with the road frontage. I've actually walked that property, and from the beginning of the pavement on the road to where the back of the hill starts is about 70 feet. So I have concerns, first of all, about them digging into that massive hill in the back, number one. Number two, I just feel like it's a big ask. It's a big property, like, they are going to put a four-unit condo, but now it's a two-unit condo, and it's the same size. That just does not make sense to me. I understand that there's different...
Criteria?
Criteria for a two-unit dwelling as opposed to a four-unit dwelling, but it's the same size.
Sorry if you might have said already, you live in the neighborhood?
My mother lives across the street. I am a co-owner of the property across the street at the condo.
Oh, and one of the condos. So what, putting aside the, your thoughts on the big ask, is it, what's your real-world concern about? You're just worried about more traffic?
I'm worried about more traffic. It's a very narrow road. There's only parking on one side. I'm not sure where they're planning on putting this driveway. It's not really clear.
Have you seen the plan?
No, I have not.
Would you like to?
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
You do have to understand, they do meet the criteria for all the setbacks.
I'm sorry?
They do meet all the setback requirements.
Okay. So there'll be a two-car garage in the middle of the, okay. And where would the parking spaces be?
They said one for each unit in the garage and one for each unit in the driveway.
In the driveway, which is this portion right here?
That is my understanding.
And that is 20 feet?
I don't know.
It looks like about roughly 20 feet.
Yeah, 20 feet.
20 feet.
Yeah, yeah, 20 feet.
Okay. So they would actually, would they have to cut into the back of that property?
I don't know. You'd have to speak to them about that, and that's not really something that's within our jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to say.
Get the signed book.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak in opposition to the application? Mr. Hall?
No comments, other than the driveway will get permitted through engineering.
Okay. With that, I'll declare the hearing closed. Jim? Well, I'll pass on you.
I don't really have a problem with it. I think it does solve the parking concern from the prior application, and I think it fits within the character.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I think the way they designed the shared driveway helps deal with the issues around frontage.
I think that it appears to be the only undeveloped lot in the neighborhood, and it does appear to be larger than the other lots in the neighborhood. And while it does not technically meet the frontage and lot size requirements, I do not think that putting a duplex on this lot, when there are other duplexes in the neighborhood, will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor will it diminish surrounding property values. I don't see any justice in denying the variance. And again, given the relatively large size of the lot, I think there is some hardship in denying the variance, so I would be in favor of granting it.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yeah, I agree. There's, my memory is, there's a fair amount of duplexes. I mean, there may even be more duplexes than single families in this neighborhood, and they have a lot of frontage, probably have more frontage than most of the properties that already have duplexes. So I think it's a reasonable use of the property. The size of it is not, doesn't need a variance.
Thank you. And I agree. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
We need a motion.
Need a motion, please.
One more time, and I'll cede my throne.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Verience is granted. Okay, our next case tonight is case 0193, 2024, 23 Montgomery Ave, CVP Civic Performance District, owner Trombley, Carolyn, Revocable Trust, 2018. Applicant is requesting to build a two-car carport and repave and expand the driveway and is requiring, is requesting variances for the following. Article 2841-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a side setback of 11 feet where 25 feet is required, and a front setback of 11 feet where 15 feet is required. Article 2877-F, to allow driveway width of 31 feet where a max of 28 feet is required. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great. Please state your name as you testify.
Yes, hi. Well, I'm Carolyn Trombley, the owner of the property, and I'm looking to build a two-car carport on my property, which is located in the CVP Civic Performance District, along with the excavation of the existing driveway and repaving of the existing driveway. And in order to suit the carport, a slight increase to the size of the driveway. From the handouts that I gave you, it shows where the existing driveway is. It's stippled in black, and then you can see, outlined somewhat, is lighter blue around it, and that would be the extension of the driveway.
Where do you park the cars now?
There's three cars that park there, and they're currently in the driveway, side by side.
But with no cover, no garage?
No, no, nothing.
You're assuming this house is built before they had cars?
1832. And it was moved in 1882.
Why do you need to extend the asphalt to do this? It looks like the carp, like, I get why you need to extend the asphalt, as I'm looking at it, to the right of the carport, but why do you need to extend it on the...
On the left?
Yes.
To fit the third car.
Okay.
Because I don't want to, we want to be able to continue to park the three vehicles there without having to park on the street, because we really feel it's important to keep the street parking available for the neighboring businesses and the courthouse.
And is it a single-family home?
It is a family home, yes.
One, single-family, okay.
Well, it's two.
It's...
Two apartments.
Okay.
But it's a family home.
It's used as a residence?
Yes, it is.
Because there's a lot of offices in there, right?
No offices, no.
I'm sorry, in the neighborhood, there's a fair amount.
Oh, yes, we're surrounded by offices, yes.
So two dwelling units?
Yes.
But used, I don't care how used, but two dwelling units.
Yes.
So you would need three parking spaces. Yes, David?
It's, I'm looking at now, technically, they would need four spaces if it was two units.
Okay.
Are they, is it, is one side owner-occupied, or are they both rented?
Yes.
And assessing has it as a two occupancy house, so they technically need four parking spaces. I don't know if it predated the authorization for that duplex, but...
Well, we could do the four parking spaces. I just didn't want to have to increase the asphalt on the green space.
Right. Well, I think what he's saying is, if you were building it from scratch, you'd be required to have four, but you're, most likely, your grandfather didn't.
Absolutely.
And is that the same reason you don't want to push it back the extra four feet?
Correct. I can, but never say that.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Please sign the book.
I will, thanks.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the appeal?
I did have one of butter that sent it...
Yeah, I'm going to introduce that in just a minute. Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the appeal? I do have one letter, one email from Mike Summers, who says he has no issue with the plans and hopes that they receive approval. Mr. Hall?
As the previous case, engineering will be involved with the driveway permit and expansion.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that, I'll declare the hearing closed. Let's start off with Jim.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a reasonable request. We have a long history of moving garages and car covers as a benefit to the community, to the neighborhood, and I'm comfortable with the extension of the asphalt to make sure that the third car is parked on the asphalt and not on the grass.
I don't have a problem with it. I am familiar with this property. I live at 42 North State Street. I totally do see the hardship on this lot.
Andrew?
Yeah, I agree. They're not, she's pushing out a little bit in order to get the three spots, which seems like a reasonable use, to be able to park three cars in a two-unit, and to be able to have a covered area is a reasonable use, so I agree.
I think the asphalt, the extension of the driveway variance is a definite E.S. There is a hardship, because technically, they should be parking four cars, but they at least need to be able to park three, and they need that space to do it. It is not going to diminish surrounding property values. I don't think it will diminish any, did I just say it will diminish surrounding property values? It won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because it is surrounded by parking lots. There is no justice in denying the variance. And given the age of the house and the configuration of the lot, there is a hardship. As for the carport, I don't really have an issue with it being four feet in the front setback. That's where carports tend to be, and pushing it further back would impinge on the very limited green space, so I think there is a hardship there as well. So I would vote to grant both variances.
Now, let's see if I can get this right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion. I'll motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Verience is granted. So our next case tonight is 194-2024, 3 E. Street, R. S. Single Family Resident District, owner Russo, Benjamin P., and Jocelyn L. Applicant is looking to install a 50-by-30-foot basketball court in his yard and has requested... and is requesting variance from Article 2841-H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow an accessory structure in the front yard setback from front property line of 12 feet where 25 feet is required, and front yard setback of 12 feet where 25 feet is required. Mr. Winters has indicated a conflict, and we'll have Mr. Evans sitting in on this particular case. Do we swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
Ben Russo.
All right, Mr. Russo, tell us what you'd like to do.
So I'm looking to put in a 30 by 50 basketball court in my backyard that would be completely fenced in. It would be 12 feet from Clinton Street, 12 feet from Yale Street. The fence would be, which was already there, that I've taken down, on the Yale Street side, would be 10 feet from Yale Street. To me, it's, it's our backyard, but I guess because it's a corner lot, it's considered a front yard. But we look at it like it's our backyard, so would be completely fenced in, 30 by 50. The hoop would be on the Yale Street side, not on the Clinton Street side. As far as being contrary to public interest, it's essentially a one-way street. You can't turn onto Yale Street from Clinton Street, so, you know, like where the fence is going back, will be coming back up. It doesn't impede, like drivers being able to see when pulling out, because it's on the Yale Street side, if that makes sense. And for me, it's, it's, it's really to give my kids, I have five kids, my kids a safe place to play. It's all fenced in. And that's the only part of the property that's, that's fenced in. So as far as putting it, like, in the driveway, there's cars in and out of my house quite a bit, five kids, one teenage driver, and more coming. So it doesn't totally make sense to put it on the other side of the house, to me. And the other issue with that is it's not fenced in. So balls would be flying, I think, all over the place, potentially. And yeah, I mean, I guess that's about it. So basically, looking to put a 30 by 50 court in, backyard fenced in. I'm willing to put a net up behind the fence on, on the Yale Street side, which would, to me, prevent any balls or objects from going over the fence and into the street.
Can you walk me through why I can't go in that back corner there, away from both streets, right there?
It's not fenced in. I suppose it could, but it's just not where I want to put it. Not sure that it would fit 30 by 50, and plus, I mean, you'd have to be 15 or 25 feet from the back property line on the, we keep our horse trailer right there. It's a horse trailer. Actually, that's probably the old owner. They had a, they had an RV, but we keep a horse trailer right there. I just don't think that it would fit right there, and it's not fenced in.
What are the setbacks for the side and back?
25.
I'm sorry?
The side and back?
They don't have a backyard, because they're a corner lot, so they have two fronts and two sides.
And what are the sides?
25.
Okay. So he would need variances wherever he wants, whatever corner he wanted to put it in?
If you wanted to approach that 25, yes.
You have an existing fence there, and that's where you want, why you want to have it?
I did, yeah, I took it down for this, and I, but it would be, it would be going back up, yeah.
And how big is that fence?
It's six feet. It was there, yep.
Regulations about the height of fences in the front yard as opposed to the side or rear? But there's no variance required for that? And, and does the net on top of the fence increase the height of the fence? How does that?
The net will not increase the height of the fence, hopefully not.
What's the height of the fence on the front yards, on the front yard?
It's four feet, but because he's going to be 10 feet off the street, I think he's exempt, but...
And what was there was six feet. And I've taken it down, but what was there, and what's on Clinton Street is six feet. So it's a white vinyl fence goes all the way down Clinton Street. I took it down on the Yale Street side to do this already, but it would look really awkward to have then a four-foot fence on the Yale Street side, if that makes sense.
It's not any balls, man.
It would.
David, could you zoom out a little bit?
Is that all right, or?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Everybody's good? Good? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this appeal? Mr. Hall?
No comments.
And with that, I'll declare the hearing closed. Ted, I'll go with you first.
I'm not clear what the hardship is here in terms of, nothing jumping out at me. In other words, we've got some rationale as to why it's not on the other side. I'm not sure how many variances would be required on the other side either, because we don't have a proposal on that, but I don't know its effect on the, on the neighborhood, what, you know, having a fence along Clinton Street. I guess it was there already. I don't think I ever noticed it before. I think that's pretty much where I stand. I'm a little confused on, on that part of it.
Would you like to go next?
Sure. I'm also struggling a bit with the hardship. Initially, the fact that it has two front setbacks seems like a good hardship, but since the side setbacks are also 25 feet, it really doesn't have any practical impact. An accessory structure, I suppose, is a reasonable use. There's no evidence about whether or not it will diminish surrounding property values, though nothing in my common sense tells me it will. It doesn't look like it is consistent with the surrounding properties, but the surrounding properties do seem to have swimming pools at least, which are recreational accessory structures. And I'm not sure that there would be any real justice in denying it, so I could get to yes, but it's not an enthusiastic yes.
There's some more to that.
I'm gonna help Laura get to yes.
I love it when you do that.
Yeah, I think the hardship is the two front yards, and that's often the issue for us. I drew the same analogy as you, that it's not, like, people that come in with swimming pools. People don't come in for hockey rinks, but they seem to put them in the yards anyway.
They're temporary, because they come down in the summer.
And so, well, snow-covered basketball court is probably temporary.
There you go.
So, and then I think the property owner did describe why other locations on the property were troublesome, particularly with the driveway and cars coming and going. I don't think, they're not asking for any relief with regard to the fences, so that's not before us, and I don't think we want to burden them with a condition about a, putting a net up to keep the basketballs from coming into Yale Street. I'd like the property owner to make his own decision about that, so I'm inclined to support.
Yeah, I'm a yes for all the reasons above. He's stuck with the two front yards and potentially needing another variance to move it to the other side of the house, so...
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, you've got 25-yard setbacks all the way around, which I think does limit what you can do. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? No? The variance is granted. Our next case tonight is 0195-2024, 2 Calum Street, R.M., Medium Dead City Residential District. Owner is Ewing Michelle J. Applicant is looking to construct a deck and screened-in porch in the back of the house, and requesting variances from Article 2841-H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow the deck to be no closer than 10 feet to the side property line, and no closer than 14 feet to the front property line, where a front setback of 25 feet and side setback of 25 feet is required. Do we swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Tell us who you are.
Michelle Ewing.
And what would you like us to know?
So I would like to put a deck and screened-in porch on the back of my house. The deck will not exceed the length of my house. It will be smaller than the length of the back of my house. And there's no other place to put a deck on my house. I really like that outside space.
You can't see it well, but there's a red line representing it.
Yeah, I'm colorblind. I can't see any of this stuff, so I'm gonna trust, I'm gonna trust you guys.
Can you put up the neighborhood?
Yep, sorry.
Sorry. So do we again have two front setbacks here?
Uh, two front yards and two side yards, yes.
I see blue.
The blue line is where it's gonna be.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions?
The kind of small portion of your house that kind of juts out, is that like a, is that like a sunroom or a mudroom?
No, that is a little bit part of my kitchen, and it's a little bit of a back entryway. It's like a little bit of a porch. It's dimensions are like...
Did you add that on, or was that there?
No.
So that's probably way precedes the code, as far as you know.
Yeah, I have no idea who put that on. And it, yeah, so it would be from that starting point, and then run along the back of the house.
And David, if she were to put it on the other side of the house, it would still need a variance, even if it was feasible?
Even if it was feasible, yes. I have electric meters, you know, my meters are there. My dining room there. There's almost no windows on the backside of my house there, just a small kitchen window. And then, so it wouldn't be darkening anything or anything like that, and it's just really not space.
Where's Calum Street?
It's in the south end. It's one street up from Rockingham. There's two houses on Rockingham. Both people who own the houses were both Michelles', and both houses are gray with white trim.
Are there mosquitoes in that part of town?
Yes, yeah. Well, because across the street, on Bow Street, there's that low area with that river there. Yeah, so it's very, very buggy.
Like a hardship to me.
Oh, yeah. It's very, very buggy there, yeah.
What's the, what's the total, roughly, even an estimate, square footage of this porch gonna be? Do you know?
So the entire thing will be 10 by 30. And then the screened-in porch area is gonna be roughly 10 by 15 or 16, and then the deck will be the rest.
Do most of your neighbors have decks?
Most of my neighbors do have decks, and, you know, in the south end, you can see how close everybody is, like, on the property line. There's garages that are bumping right up to the back of, you know, other people's yards. My neighbor behind me, like, you can see their garage is practically right on the property line of the house behind them. You know, it's just tight in the south end, and I think it's gonna add a lot of value to my home, because it's gonna be, it's gonna fit in with the aesthetic. It's gonna be white and gray, so it's gonna match, match my house exactly. So I think it will add value to the neighborhood. My neighbor's across the street on One Calum just recently put a porch on the Hope Street side, right there, exactly on their house. You know, and it just added value to their home and made it look nicer, so...
You good? Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone wishing to speak against this appeal? Mr. Hall?
No comments.
With that, I'll declare the hearing closed and open it up for discussion. Andrew?
Well, I mean, granted, I will say, it, you know, she could make it, she could probably make it compliant by making it smaller and bringing it in on each side of the, I think that might look a little weird, but also, and so it kind of comes down to the size of the porch, is that, and deck, is that a reasonable use to have one that size? And typically, we've, we've been inclined to approve setbacks when they're kind of just an extension of existing setback. In this case, the existing setback isn't for very long, so it's kind of doubling it, but nevertheless, it's not moving it that far out. So I think it's, it's a reasonable-sized porch, so, and deck, so I'd be inclined to approve it.
I don't know if she could make it compliant with 25-foot setbacks all around.
Right.
And I clearly see the hardship, given those 25-foot setbacks all around. I think it's a reasonable use of the property. It's certainly not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Don't believe it's going to diminish surrounding property values, and I don't see any substantial justice in denying it, so I would be inclined to grant it.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm not really seeing anywhere else it can go.
I agree entirely with Laura.
And do I. Ready for a motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. The variance is granted. And we're gonna take a brief five-minute break. And we're halfway through our agenda.
Hundred and square feet as well. Do you swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
My name is Anthony LaFo.
Anthony. Last name?
LaFo, L-A-F-O. I represent the TJX Corporation, who is the owner of this new store. Their closest one, I think, is about twenty or thirty miles away down in Bedford. So they are taking the former space of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, which is on the far right side of the building, just to the right of TJ Maxx. So with what we were allowed as of right was a hundred and twenty square feet. And I don't know if you all have this drawing. I have a drawing here that shows, and this was actually a backup plan that was already approved. And this shows this very, I can pass it around, a very tiny, well, that's what we're asking for. I have a picture here that shows what it would be if we stuck with the regulations.
This one? I don't know which one.
No, let's pass this around.
Yeah, by all means, pass it around.
There you go, sir. Sorry. Actually, I'm going to send this with it. This is a picture of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond signage that was in the same spot. And as you'll see when it comes around, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond signage was kind of crammed and took up the entire facade that was there, where our sign, even with the larger one that we're asking for, is still a little bit more proportional looking on the facade. And to go along with that, just again for visibility, the parking lots entrances to this plaza are on the far ends as opposed to in the middle, like typical plazas. So as you drive in, there's a great spot for visibility where they could put a small three-foot sign on the front right side of the building. And that's pretty much it.
So this is actually for three signs, the big one on the front, the smaller one on the side, and then the one on the freestanding side?
Nope, the third sign, I think they're counting, is, it's a tiny little two-and-a-half square foot. We call it an under-canopy sign. It just hangs from the ceiling in front of the outside doors. So if you're walking down the sidewalk, say, from one store to another, you can see where their entry is.
Okay.
Just for comparison's sake, do you know how big the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond sign was?
Don't know what the square footage was. They just have, I don't know if you got to the picture yet, but you can see it was substantially larger.
Did it have a variance?
It did have a variance.
Doesn't the, in a shared building like this, the number of signs doesn't go by the tenant, right? It goes by the, so, so the maximum of three signs is?
For the whole building.
But there's obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, isn't, I mean, there's more than three signs in that building, right?
But there, there's a variance to go over the three signs, and they want to put theirs on.
And they don't get any credit that they're replacing and?
Oh, okay. But it says to allow a maximum of three signs with a total of two ninety, but it's really a maximum of well over three signs.
Shouldn't this have been addressed when the salon came, like a while back, in the same plaza?
So each tenant, when it comes in, needs the variance to exceed the maximum of three signs?
Oh. That's crazy that a build that, you put every strip mall in?
This is why we had to do all those variances down at the new.
Yeah, the other thing I could-
Change the ordinance. That's thirty years old.
Right.
The other thing I could just point out is so that the store immediately to the left of Sierra is the TJ Maxx store, which is another one of our chains. So we've done the signage there, and the sign that is existing there is, like, the T is the same height as the logo in the Sierra, so it's consistent across the building. It's, you know, you're not going to see, like, one side of the building have this massive sign and the other side. It's kind of anchored on one end by the, I believe it's Rocky's Hardware, which has a pretty good-sized sign on. I think they have Rocky's on one line and Hardware on the second line. So it's pretty, pretty consistent with the area. And like, as you're more than aware, there's no residential or any other kind of uses. It's a hundred percent retail from wherever you could see the signage from.
What are you selling in there?
Best way to describe it would be, it's like outdoor sports, kayaks and clothing and camping stuff.
Like EMS?
Fire, RIA.
Like EMS or?
Yeah, similar.
Yeah.
Are you going to use the entire building so we're not, you know, the entire space that was Bed Bath &amp; Beyond will be?
Yes.
Yeah.
Trees are, I can't get into the parking lot, sorry, I'm trying.
No, I.
You can see part of where, now you lose it again.
I did notice today, coming in off of, off of the highway and turning right onto Loudoun Road, and as you come up, I mean, it's a beautiful line of trees that you're probably talking about, but you can't even see the pylon sign, like, you can't even see the plaza until you're, like, right, right there.
Good thing we all know it's there.
Right.
I was going to say, that's why Bed Bath &amp; Beyond went out of business.
Any further questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone speak in favor of the appeal or against Mr. Hall?
No comments, thank you.
The hearing closed. And Jim?
Yeah, I think it's consistent with what goes on in that plaza, consistent with what we've done previously. And on the whole, it, this variance will have, be less non-conforming than what had previously been approved for Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, so I'm supporting.
Mark?
Yeah, the consistency is there.
Yeah, I was kind of, I was sitting in the audience for the last hearing. It seems like this, it's kind of mystifying that you can only get a hundred and twenty square feet of signs on such a huge complex, but I agree with what was already said.
I will make a motion to approve the requested variances. It will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It is consistent with the signage that has been there and that exists over the rest of the building. It will not diminish surrounding property values, again, because it's consistent. Likewise, there is no substantial justice in denying it. And the unnecessary hardship is not only the unreasonableness of the ordinance, but also the size of the building and the very limited amount of signage that is permitted.
Let's vote. All in favor? Oh. Again, half credit. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. So for the next two cases, I'm going to recuse myself and ask Ms. Specter-Morgan to chair.
No, I have one. Thank you. Okay, this is my first time chairing, so everyone be nice to me. We're going to take the next two cases together because they are related. The first is case ZBA-0200-2024, 11 Summit Street in the Neighborhood Residential District. The owner is, someone help me?
I think it's Gaffara.
Gaffara? Gaffara, Michael and Eileen M. Applicant is seeking a lot line adjustment between 11 Summit and 12 Tohonto and is requesting a variance from Article 28-4-1H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow for a rear setback of six feet, where twenty-five feet is required, and a minimum lot size of 7,531 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is the minimum. The related case is ZBA-0207-2024, 12 Tohonto, same district, same owner. Applicant is seeking a lot line adjustment between 11 Summit and 12 Tohonto and is requesting a variance from Article 28-4-1 or LH, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow for a rear setback of 20.5 feet, where 25 feet is required, and a minimum lot size of 3,968 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is the minimum. Would you please, do you swear that everything you're going to say is true and accurate?
I do.
Would you please introduce yourself to the board?
My name, my name is Michael Gaffara.
What would you like us to know?
And I live at 12 Tohonto Street. I also own the adjoining property at 11 Summit Street.
Okay.
And I would request that, just for purposes of discussion, that we first do the 11 Summit Street before we start talking about the 12 Tohonto Street.
Sure.
I wonder if, can you get this up on the screen, or does everybody have this?
We do.
Yes.
Essentially that, this document shows what I'm trying to do. I own the two properties that are butted at the rear. There is a total of twenty-six feet between the two buildings. The current property line is six feet behind my house at 12 Tohonto Street and twenty feet from the, from the back of 11 Summit Street. I would like to flip those dimensions so that the property line ends up six feet behind the, behind the Summit Street property. Just a quick background, we bought that property in nineteen seventy-seven. We bought 12 Tohonto Street from people who then owned 11 Summit Street. And the, Mrs. Kibbling lived to be a hundred and one, and she died in twenty-twenty-two, when I was able to buy the Summit Street property. So we were neighbors for forty-plus years. The issue here is that the historical use of this property, for the past forty-seven years, as long as I've lived there, this whole area between the two houses has been treated by both of us as my backyard belonging to 12 Tohonto Street. Over the course of time, I've always maintained the property. I've cut the grass. I've put garden beds on that property. I've built the sidewalk across that property, all with the cooperation of the neighbor. The situation now is that, since I own the house, that's at 11 Summit Street, I'm renovating it, and essentially, what's been, the renovation will return it to a single-family home. And the property at 11 Summit Street is totally focused to the, to the south. As you're looking at this chart, it would be to the, to the, which way am I here? To the left on this chart. And the, which side? The, the west, the backside of the house, and the north side of the house, there's no, no egress, no doors there at all. The focus is to the south and to the east. And what I'm proposing is leaving a small buffer of six feet on the, on the west side of the Summit Street House and making that, the yard area, as it's historically been treated, as part of 12 Tohonto Street. The hardship here is that even when I decide to sell the Summit Street property, I will be giving up my yard if the property line has to stay where it is. And as I am presently the owner of both houses, both properties, and it seems to me that this is the opportune time to correct that anomaly in the property line so that the yard actually does belong to the Tohonto Street property rather than the Summit Street property. This proposed variance from the lot, from the area requirements and from the setback requirements has no effect on anybody in the neighborhood but me. No, there's no change of use whatsoever. It's just where is the line going to be between these two properties? And as I said, I think it, it corrects the, it recognizes the actual uses of the property as opposed to what the deeds show as the ownership of the property. It will not be contrary to public use because, again, it has no effect whatsoever on any of butters or the general neighborhood. And what I'm proposing to do will make the actual property lines reflect the true functionality of that backyard. There will be no diminution of value because it has no effect on anybody else. I do have a couple of neighbors here who will, actually, they're the closest to butters. They, the Barklow's are butted on Tohonto Street. They butted both of these properties, and they will testify that they're in favor of this, of this proposal. So I would be happy to entertain any questions about my proposal for 11 Summit Street.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Is there elevation difference?
No elevation. Totally, it's a total flat lot. They're not that big.
Okay.
Andrew?
Yeah, I probably should know this, but obviously, we can approve a lot line adjustment. You're just saying you need these variances to even go forward with the request?
Absolutely.
Who does approve that?
I have to go to Planning Board.
Planning Board approves that?
Yes, the Planning Board will consider it to be a, a minor subdivision. But they would not take up the subdivision request until I get whatever variances are needed to do it.
And it kind of strikes, just eyeballing it, I mean, even with the current lot line, it seems that the Tohonto property has more total yardage.
Yes, it does.
And certainly will have more if this is approved. I mean, what's the, I understand that this has kind of informally been the Tohonto property's backyard, but what, what's the yard for Summit look like? What do they use for a yard? Just that side yard there?
The Summit Street property, the southern entrance on the Summit Street House enters a yard which, I think, did I measure it off? Yes, it's thirty-five feet, and it would be thirty-five feet by sixty feet, I think, on the, let's see, on that picture. Let me get oriented here. It will be, the Summit Street House, the one that has kind of a greenish-looking roof, and it would be that area that's below the house. That's the yard for the, for the Summit Street House. And there's a, there's an entry, you can almost make out the entryway there on the, sort of, the left side of that end of the house. And there's that entry, and then there's the entry in the shadows on Summit Street. Those are the two entries of the house.
So the shadowy area, that's a yard. It's just hard to tell from the, or that?
No, that's not the yard. That's, the yard is the southern green area.
Oh, yeah, the big green area.
And as a practical matter, as a practical matter, I will hope, if the right person buys the house, that it will be the same situation that I had with the prior owners, where we didn't pay any attention to the property lines. But I just want to be covered in the event that somebody buys that house that decides they want to put up a fence on the property line, and I don't want it to be affecting my house on Tohonto. As long as I have control of both properties, I'd like to take care of that now rather than fight it out sometime in the future.
And are the properties currently both non-conforming anyway?
That whole neighborhood is non-conforming. And that, I mean, with the twenty-six-foot distance between the two houses, it's kind of tough to get two twenty-five-foot setbacks out of that. It doesn't work. If I could get one to be conforming, it would be one foot from the back of the other house, and I'd never ask for it, and you'd never approve it. But that leads me to my next, any other questions about the 11 Summit Street?
Just a question, what happens where the car is parked there that goes on the other lot?
That's where you're building your garage, right?
That's where the garage is being built, yes.
You received a variance for that a year ago?
Two years, a year and a half ago.
I was here for that, I mean. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Do you want to move on to the next application?
Yeah, the 12 Tohonto Street application, it's a mystery to me why I had to file it in the first place. There's two possible results from the 11 Summit Street request. One, one is that you deny it, in which case, there's no need for asking for something for 12 Tohonto Street. The other is that you grant it, and what I'm doing in this proposal is reducing the nonconformity of 12 Tohonto Street. So either way, there really isn't anything for this board to do. I'm not asking for any relief from the board with respect to 12 Tohonto Street. When I filed this application, I, I only filed it for 11 Summit. I was told that I have to file for 12 Tohonto as well. I asked that the fee be, that the filing fee, which is $460, that that be waived. I was told that Mr. Hall did not have the authority to waive it. I'm asking this board to waive it. I mean, there's no reason for 12 Tohonto Street to be before, be before you today. You would never grant me the variance for 11 Summit and then deny the variance for 12 Tohonto to reduce a nonconforming use. Makes no sense.
David, I assume the second application was required because he was altering the, the boundaries of a nonconforming lot?
Correct, and he's still not, he's making it, I agree, he's making it-
More conforming.
More nonconforming, but it still creates a-
Nonconforming.
Existing nonconforming lot. This board does not have the authority to grant refunds, only City Council does.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not asking for any relief from this body with respect to 12 Tohonto Street, zero.
Yes, you are, sir, by the-
You are, you're asking for us to approve the alteration of the boundaries, is what David's saying. And regardless, we don't have the authority to waive the fee. You'll have to go ask the City Council.
So even if we don't have the authority to waive the fee, but if we were, you know, in this case, I don't know, but if we were to ever find that a, a variance was unnecessary, it wouldn't matter, they, they still would get a refund, right?
Well, if it was unnecessary due to staff error, we would authorize a refund. But in this case, it's not unnecessary, it's required by ordinance, maybe even case law for all I know.
Right. What, what happens if somebody withdraws their application?
If someone what?
If some, if he were to withdraw the application?
He'd have to withdraw both of them.
Well, I'm just hypothetically, if he decided to just withdraw one, would he get a refund on his?
If we've already noticed it, no, he would not.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to offer?
No.
Okay. Thank you for, any other questions on the board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have two folks who are-
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Would anyone like to be heard in favor of these variances? Come on up.
Hi.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the board?
It's Cata Barklow, and I live at 10 Tohonto Street.
Okay. What would you like us to know?
We've been neighbors of Mr. Gaffara forty-six years, and he has always used that yard.
Okay.
Did all mowing, keeping up and everything.
Okay.
And Mrs. Kibbling lived in that house, and she was actually a hundred and one and one month when she died.
God bless her.
That's all. And we don't have any objections. We are his closest neighbors.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Would you please sign in as you leave? Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard in favor of the variances? Would anyone like to be heard in opposition of the variances? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Let's start with Andrew. What do you think about these variance applications?
Well, there's no new construction, and obviously, it's, it's, as has been stated, that there's noncompliance, no matter what, based on pre-existing conditions. So however he divides it up, the total noncompliance by some measurement is going to be the same. You know, he's basically acting as a developer on a small scale, and it's his judgment call as to how to best sort of situate the properties for future users, so I don't, you know, I don't see any reason to deny it.
Ted?
I agree.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's the fact that the, owns both properties makes it, makes it much easier for us, and it's a very logical adjustment to the law.
Mark?
Agreed.
I also agree. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do you need to do two separate motions?
I would, well, let's at least make motions clear that, yes. Let's take the motion on 11 Summit.
All right, I move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of granting the variance with regard to 11 Summit?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I'll take a motion on 12 Tohonto?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion granted. Thank you very much.
Don't say with me there.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Check will be in the mail.
Thanks to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay.
Good to see you.
Did you?
You did great.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're down to three cases.
Don't jinx it.
Don't jinx it, I won't. All right, next case is 163 Loudoun Road, CG General Commercial District. Owner is RAI Family LLC. Applicant is seeking variance from Article 2872 to provide a total of thirty-five parking spaces where fifty-two are required.
It's the Red Apple? Or is this the?
No, it abuts the Red Apple. It's right next to it.
Oh, 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 right there. Oh, gotcha, okay.
You both swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Yes, I do.
Great. As you testify, kindly tell us who you are.
Good evening. My name is Sean Dunphy. I'm an attorney from Cronin, Bissin, and Zalinski in Manchester. I am joined by Ms. DeLu Ray. We are here behalf, on behalf of the Ray Family LLC, which is the owner of 163 Loudoun Road here in Concord, requesting a variance for parking relief. I'll just do a quick background as to why we're here. The property is improved with a commercial building that is about fourteen thousand square feet. It's in the General Commercial District and designated as retail. The first floor is occupied by Aaron's Furniture, and the second floor is currently vacant. My clients bought the property last year with the second floor vacant, with the intent to use it for Ms. Ray's in-home care business. It will be the administrative office for her operation. It won't have any customers or anybody come to the property because it is a traveling business, and they plan to rent the other half of the top floor. This is a change in use from retail to office of that area, so it triggered a review, which found that the parking on the property does not meet the necessary amount under the zoning ordinance. And based on that, they, Ms. Ray and the LLC had a survey of the property and figured out how many spots they could fit to meet the dimensional requirements, and they determined that it is below the required amount for the retail's use and the, the office use. In total, they would be required to have fifty-two, and they can fit a total of thirty-five that meet the City of Concord's dimensional requirements. And they, the thirty-five number is based on, as I said, what they can fit in the existing property. The size of the property makes it very difficult to meet the requirements of the size of the building, and that is why we're here tonight. I'm happy to go through the variance elements, but I've done great on time so far, and I don't want to be the one to ruin that, so. Any questions? Please let me know.
So every, the, the, the non-building portion of the lot right now is basically maximized for every spot that can reasonably fit on it? Is that fair to say?
Right, right now, as it sits, the, the only lined parking spaces are in the front and on the side of the building, and the back lot is not lined. The, the owners look to make each section properly lined, so thirty-five is the number. Right now, I think it's twenty-two is what is there.
Oh, so they, but they've looked into it, and thirty-five is the most I can get out of this? There's no green space or some other area they could pave or anything like that?
There's a little green space on the back of the property, but there's a condo back there, so pushing any, any closer to that wouldn't, wouldn't work to keep that buck for the residential use.
And you said you were going to rent the other half of the top floor. Is that also going to be office space?
Yes, yes.
Do you happen to know, it's, you said it's vacant, this top floor. Do you happen to know the last time it was used and what it was used for?
During the purchase and sale process, the Rays were told that it was last rented during the last round of the U.S. Census by the Census.
Saw that in the application.
How that worked, we don't know because that was the prior owner. My clients never had any relationship with the Census, but that's who we were told was up there.
So that must have been a temporary rent?
Yes, yeah, they came around and left.
If you were to put retail on the second floor, how many spaces would you need?
It would be more than the, what we're looking for now. I believe, based on my math, it would be fifty-six would be required if it were to stay retail, so we're actually reducing that number. If you'd like, I can go through the math, but-
No, that's okay.
Yeah, it's fifty-six.
But that's my point. I think it, it would require less.
Yes.
Retail would require more spaces.
Correct, yes.
Office space is less impactful, and so it would require less.
Yes, yes.
Seems like the Census, Census Bureau kind of snuck through on that one because they should have triggered it. They used their-
It's governmental use.
Right.
They get away with things.
Yes, prior owner, we don't know.
Are we good? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone want to speak in favor of this appeal or against? Mr. Hall?
No comments.
Sean, can you make sure you sign in? Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks.
With that, I declare the hearing closed and open it up for discussion. I'm not picking on anyone this time.
What are we going to do, make them demolish?
I'll start.
You got one story.
Yeah.
The hardship is clearly the size of the lot versus the size of the building, and there is no way to fit additional spaces on this lot and keep the travel lane that is required. It's not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which is already filled with plenty of parking. It's not going to diminish surrounding property values, and there is no justice in denying the variance, so I would be in favor of granting it.
Jim?
I'm also in favor of granting it for the reasons that Laura mentioned. I think in some measure, it's a business decision by the property owner. I see little risk of overflow. People aren't going to park in Loudon Road or East Side Drive to go there because it's not allowed parking because it's not allowed.
Mark?
Agreed.
Andrew?
Agreed.
Great. Looking for a motion.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Variance granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next to last case.
Dex and signs tonight.
We're rolling.
Dex and signs.
Sixteen cases.
Wait.
See what happens when Chris isn't here?
He'll tell. O two oh two, twenty twenty-four, twelve Perkins Court, UT, Urban Transitional District. Owner is Gifford Stephanie A. Applicant is seeking a variance from Article twenty-eight four H, Table of Dimensional Regulations for the Construction of a Deck, which will be five feet from the side property line where ten feet is required. You swear, do you swear tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And tell us who you are.
So my name is Nathan Gifford. I'm here with my mother, Stephanie Gifford, who is the owner of the property at twelve Perkins Court. And as you said, we're seeking a variance in order to build a deck on the property that is five feet from the side of the property where ten feet is required. We've designed the proposed deck this way because this ordinance interferes with the reasonable use of the property. If you take a look at the attached GIS maps, you'll see that there's no place to build this deck on the property that wouldn't interfere with either a walkway, an easement, or require a variance in this case. Additionally, denial of this variance would cause an undue hardship to my elderly grandmother, who has recently come to live with my parents. She loves to sit outside during the evenings and read, and without this deck, her only alternative is to sit in the driveway due to her limited mobility and her inability to walk safely on grass lawns. Substantial justice is done in this authorization. The construction of this deck is consistent with the area's present use. I grew up in this house, and the section of the yard has always been used for recreation such as lawn games and barbecues. This deck would only help facilitate those activities. The proposed deck would not be contrary to the public interest. It would not threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the public. It will be built by a contractor whom we trust and we know does quality work. The spirit of the ordinance will be observed. As I read it, this ordinance was put in place to prevent overcrowding on the side of the property, and this deck, as proposed, would not overcrowd the side of the property. There would be several feet between our property and our budding neighbor's property. You'll also see in the proposed plan that the side of the house where this deck is proposed is already within ten feet of the side of the property, and that this deck would not extend past the side of the house. And finally, there will be no diminution of value of surrounding properties as a result of this authorization. Our budding neighbor has a very similar deck to this proposed deck, and so this would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And with that, I'm happy to clarify any portion of this proposal or answer any questions that you all may have.
Why can't you scoot it a couple more feet towards the driveway?
There is a, there's a door.
Okay.
The door to the house is there.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you and Mr. Hall, Wayne, if you want. So why are you building a deck instead of a patio?
I'm not sure what the difference is, I'm sorry.
Well, patio would be, you know, at surface level, wouldn't be built up high.
Oh, I see. So there are steps to get to the front door, or the back door in this case, and so this would be a deck because it's level with the.
With the exit of the house?
With the exit of the house, correct. So there's steps and then also a ramp as well to get to the back door.
Oh.
This is a very old photo. This was.
Yes, it is.
Twenty-twelve, maybe.
I think this is your house, is it not?
That is, yes. So it would be right in this area where that fence is now.
Where is Perkins Court? What's land, where are you near?
About Wells Bowling Alley.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay.
Is the fence that was in the picture, is that still there?
No, it is not.
Questions? Other questions? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh. I see.
Andrew, did you have something you wanted to ask?
No. So I'm just talking myself.
Anyone in, wants to speak in favor of the appeal or against? Mr. Hall?
No comments.
Declare the hearing closed. And Andrew, let's start with you.
I mean, this is very similar to the case we heard earlier, but I mean, it's a more modest deck than that even, and it's, again, it doesn't extend the setback worse than it currently is, and so I think it's a reasonable use. I would, and he explained why this is really the only place that it can be placed based on the construction of the house, so I would be inclined to approve.
I agree with you, Andrew.
Yeah, it's tight back there, so yeah. Yeah, I agree. Usually when we get requests where it's less of an intrusion and setback than the actual house, we tend to be in favor of it.
I would make a motion to approve. It is a minimal deck that complies with the front setback, which is not an easy task, which does not impinge on the side setback any more than the house already does. It does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which has some tightly packed houses with similar decks. It, for that reason, it's not going to diminish surrounding property values. There would be no justice in denying this variance, and the property is certainly uniquely shaped, and that house is uniquely located on that property. So I would make a motion to approve.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Your variance is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And finally, our last case tonight is O two oh four, twenty twenty-four, Seventy-Six Community Drive, RN, Neighborhood Residential District. Owner is Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire, Inc. Applicant is seeking a variance from Article twenty-eight six seven I and Article twenty-eight six eight A one, provide sixty-two square feet of signage where twenty square feet is allowed to place the signs above the first floor.
Good evening. My name, yep, go ahead.
I've got one more coming up. We'll swear you together. And do you both swear tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
As you testify, please state your name.
Craig Moore with New Hampshire Signs.
And I'm Christopher Eamon with the Boys and Girls.
Great. What do we want to do?
So I'll start off with a little background about the project and the request. This facility comprises of an eighty-nine hundred square foot, single-story building with two public entrances that serves four organizations. The Pennacook Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, the Rowe Family Early Learning Center, the Pennacook Library and Activity Center. The signage is needed to properly direct traffic from the street by buses, cars, and by.
Just probably clarify a couple things, but that's all right.
Just to clarify a couple things, the Rowe Family Early Learning Center and the Pennacook Community Center and the Boys and Girls Club are all really one entity. They're just, the name is from a family that really was supportive of the project, but that's the early learning center that's going to be embedded in the, in the building.
Was this building, did you have a variance for this sometime within the last year or two?
Lighting, I think. Lighting? They were here for something.
They were here for something, right? I'm trying to remember what it was.
Don't quote me, but yeah.
I think it was lighting.
We've got a lot of things going on, so I get confused myself, but.
It can, beautiful.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the neighbors had a lot of input in it as well. Make sure it fit the character of the neighborhood.
They seem to have some concerns about the signs, too. But, I mean, they seem appropriately sized to me, given the size of the building. Is there signage on the library? Is that the blue portion?
No, that, the, sorry, the library portion is, the, well, the portion to your right, the green.
Oh, okay.
Is that, when, the Pennacook Library, is that the Pennacook branch of the Concord Public Library?
That's correct. Yeah, that's where they're going to be housed.
Oh, it's going to be there?
Correct.
Oh, it's currently in like a very small, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, it's like right and downtown.
Yeah. So they're going to, how does that work? The city rents it from?
It's a condo. It's going to be a condo situation.
Oh, so the city is going to partly own part of that building?
Yes, that's correct.
But it's not currently a condo?
Not yet. It will be hopefully soon, once the city council approves it.
So is the city bound by the sign ordinance?
The city only owns a portion of the building.
Right.
So I guess if you wanted to argue that they could possibly be exempt from the sign ordinance, but the city doesn't want to play that role.
Oh, okay.
As I understand it, they don't like doing that for any of their properties, but.
Okay.
If by regulation, you're right, they probably could.
Okey-dokey.
Laura, I'm glad, sorry. Can you just walk me through this about each of the buildings and the signage that's already there and what you're asking for tonight? And you can get up and point to the picture.
Yeah, I can't make that any bigger, really, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
conditions we received.
No, but they can go up there and show us, tell us.
Yeah, I can just.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I can't read that.
Spending a lot of time, this is really all one building. We just made it look like separate buildings to kind of fit more into the, again, to the fabric of the community, so it didn't look more like an institutional building. So all of this is really the early childhood part. This is going to be more of like a cafatorium like you would see in a school with a raised ceiling. That's why it's a little bit higher than what they can throw a basketball in there, but it's really more for them to, the school-aged kids to kind of, there's going to be room for forty-five students in the afternoon. And again, this is, right here is the Pennacook branch of the library. And so the signage here just kind of denotes that, yeah, it's part of the Boys and Girls Club. This is really the main part of the Pennacook Community, so we wanted to honor the history of what this facility always was for seventy-something years. It was the Pennacook Community Center on that occasion.
And you're here because that signage is just going to be above the windows on the second floor?
Pardon?
You're here tonight, no?
No, because they have sixty-two square foot of signage where twenty is allowed.
That is what you defer to.
They need both?
It is above the second.
We were asked.
Above the first story. If you see in the memo.
Was it noticed for that?
I saw that in the application. I don't know if it's on the.
I have to look at the notice.
It says that it's twenty-eight dash six dash seven I.
I see it, okay. Sorry, my bad.
Thank you.
Place a sign above the first story. It states that the place sign above this first story on the same wall for the Pennacook Community Center now. It was built like this, and it constructed to look like a two-story, but it is a single story.
And the sign above, is that, I can't read it, but is that the Rowe Family, what is the sign, it's going to say above the?
In the center of the building?
Yeah.
That one is the one that reads the Pennacook Community Center.
Great.
Yeah, we wanted that.
We wanted that front and center.
Yep, agreed. Is that sixty-two square feet, is that the total amount allowed for all four, or is that just what's allowed for your, for the unit in question tonight?
That's the total square footage, square footage of all the signage requested.
For all?
For all, where twenty is allowed.
But it's one building.
But it's one building.
It's just designed to look like more than one building.
It has two entrances and help clarify what's in the building and what entrances to use.
So even when the building is divided into condos and has four separate owners, it's still subject to?
Well, you have two owners, I believe.
There's only two owners. There's only two owners, that's correct.
Oh, okay. But so, but when it's divided up, nevertheless, even though there's two.
Still one building.
It still follows the one building rules for signs?
Welcome to our sign ordinance.
Right, we, I think, I remember this before, and, but what about the four signs? Is it, are they allowed four signs, or do they need a variance for the number of signs? Because wasn't there something about a maximum of three, or that depends on the size of the building? Like the Flatley Building, it's at a maximum of three.
Yeah.
And that's a huge building.
Those are freestanding signs. That was a separate.
Oh, oh, for wall signs, it's just total square footage. It doesn't matter how many you have. Okay, got it. Thought I got you.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
There you go.
I guess we're tabling for a while.
Yeah.
You guys good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard against this appeal?
You have an email, sir.
Yeah, I'll get to it. I've just got some, please come forward.
Truth be known, I didn't know what it would look like, so I have no idea if I'm really in favor or opposed.
So I hope that helps.
There was very little information that came out, so it's, I'm just here to figure out if that means are they illuminated, are they?
So let's swear you in. You swear tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name, please.
Max Mayo.
And what would you like us to know?
I guess what I really wanted to do is understand what the signage looked like. Like, square footage doesn't tell you anything. Is it like one huge, is it narrow? Is it like one huge, is it narrow?
Right.
So I really wanted to just come up and look at the pictures. Um, will these be illuminated? Will there be lights on them? Are they?
I want to say no, the way it's presented here.
Do we know that?
They typically come back.
Yeah, they'll come back with a re- enough for.
When he comes back, all right. Will they be illuminated? If so, during what hours? Will they be around the clock? Will they only be during the daytime? I'm not opposed to the size of them or the look of the signs. I'm just more curious about how they will present.
Okay, so lighting is really your main concern?
It is. It's mostly a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um.
You live in the neighborhood?
I do not. I own a house in the neighborhood. My, I bought a house for my daughter.
Yep.
Lives there, so, um, I believe the lighting issue will be dealt with by planning board as far as their approval process, but in the residential districts, I don't think it's gonna go to ADR. I'm sorry, I don't have a more definitive answer, but you don't control lighting. That I do know.
Unless the signs are internally illuminated signs permitted?
That type of stuff.
Right.
Right.
And I can't tell from the picture if that's the case or not, but I would be.
We'll ask them when they come back.
I would be opposed if they were illuminated. It's a neighborhood.
Yeah.
But the way they seem to present, I'm actually okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in.
Actually, it says here, we are requesting non-illuminated letters on the building.
There we go.
See, that wasn't here, so thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this appeal?
I do have a letter from David and Laura Field of Sixty-eight Community Drive. And they're opposed to seeing this large sign. Uh, the signage has no purpose as people will be driving down small streets. Um, why on the roof? Um, don't they already have normal signage on the ground? Uh, so they're, they're both opposed to the, the sign request.
Mr. Moore and Mr. Eamon, do you want to offer factual rebuttal, but, uh, you've just been asked and heard?
Thank you. I can help clarify. The signage is not internally illuminated, is cast aluminum letters. I was made aware that there, there could be some sort of down lighters on the letters, but the, but the signage themselves aren't. So that would be the external illumination, if possible. Um, the other question was about other freestanding or ground signs. Um, there is no other freestanding or ground signs. This is the only identification for the building. I think that was, that was the only two questions, really.
Do we have any follow-up questions from members of the board? Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
No, no comments.
So David, this is the twenty-square-foot requiring, that comes not from the size of the building, from the frontage, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So that's why it's such a, such a CB allowance in this case, because they don't have much frontage, it looks like.
This is more curiosity than I should have asked the applicant, but David, is this a building that was rehabilitated? Is it new construction?
No, they combined, I think, three lots, and that's part of the variances you heard a while back. And then they need a variance for the use because it's a residential district. And I don't know what the variances they received, but it's a brand-new building. Lot line adjustments.
Okay.
Great. All right, final case, any discussion?
Here again, I think that the, um, the twenty-square-feet is really, I guess it's derived from the frontage on, I don't know what street that is, that intersects with Dolphin, but it, I understand the building is in a neighborhood, but it also supports the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's allowing the people of Pennacook to get kind of government or somewhat government-like services without having to come all the way to Concord. Um, and the building's already been approved, or it's a, they're not asking for any variances for the building itself. So given the size of the building and what it does, I think the signs are very appropriate and, and modest. So I, you know, I have no problem with it.
I completely agree. I think that the signage is a completely reasonable, if not small, for the size of the building. I think the hardship is the massive size of the building and the unreasonably small amount of signage that is allowed. I appreciate that it's a residential neighborhood, but I don't think putting this amount of signage on this building is going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood or diminish surrounding property values. And I don't see any justice in denying this variance. The signage is simply needed to help people identify where they're going on the building.
Yeah, I agree. For the size of the, the building, it's modest signage and, uh, it meets the goal of what you want, which is making sure people find where they're supposed to go.
Agreed. Me too. Need a motion?
I would move to approve both variances.
Can I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Your sign is approved.
Thank you.
So that concludes all our public hearings. Just a couple of housekeeping things. We need to review it and accept a finding of fact.
A bunch of them, right? A bunch.
Tons of them.
I was absent from this meeting, so I'm gonna abstain.
So it's up to you two.
You were all absent.
Was I here? I don't think I was here either, was I?
June sixth?
I was here. I would move approval of the findings of fact.
I need a second?
I'm not here, so. So we might have to postpone.
Jim was here and Nick was here.
What meeting was it?
June sixth.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, I'll second.
June fifth.
These all say June sixth. It was June fifth.
Ooh, that's a.
They timed it the day after, right?
Oh, really? Okay.
Great. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So we have three ayes and two abstentions, I guess.
Yep. So first of the ayes is Laura.
Monique.
Motion, second.
Middle three.
Three ayes are right here.
Yeah, and can you check the date? Because he's absolutely right, that says public hearing on the sixth and these say the fifth.
So that's a finding of fact that's inaccurate.
The findings say, having held a public hearing on June sixth.
Oh, oh, okay.
And then the minutes say June fifth, so just whichever one's right. Okay.
My fault.
Leave it on Craig.
Good catch, Mark.
Craig.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Again, the next thing we need is a review and acceptance of the minutes. And again, it's only three of us at that one.
So moved.
You know what, you can, I can still vote on them, but if I was for both, then the May meeting, I wasn't here.
This is just June, is it? Just June.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes again, two, two not voting. And finally, any other business that may legally come before the board?
Yes, I'd like to advise you that the city council did approve the reorganization of community development. With that, the advertisement for the city planner, assistant city planner, no, I'm sorry, for the city planner went out, as well as assistant city planning slash zoning has been all sent out there. So if you know anyone that's interested in either one, especially the zoning, I would appreciate it. Other than that, there is no other information that I have. Thank you.
Want a job?
No, I have a job, thanks.
I have a question. Uh, maybe I've just missed it in the past, but the, um, landowner consent forms that are in the packets, is that new to us?
Uh, it's something that I think Tracy started and it's a requirement that we have to have.
Yeah.
Whether you have people.
No, it's good enough that I often.
What you wanna have in the packages is something that we probably will look at at some point.
No, it's good enough because oftentimes I'm confused if it's like the tenant coming in to put a sign up or it's the building owner, knowing the building owner.
We just make sure property owners are aware of what they're being requested of their properties.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Michael.